Veterans Monument on Memorial Day.
Heavenly Father, we thank you that we are able to gather here in a country of freedom, a country that honors the brave men and women that have gone before us and have given their lives so that we could enjoy every single day of our freedom.
Purple Heart recipient Daniel Arguello, who served in the 25th Infantry Division of the U.S. Army, also expressed his gratitude for being honored. His wife wore his pin, which is awarded to those wounded as a result of engaging the enemy while serving in the U.S. Military.
Make your life as good because you deserve good life. You honor me by allowing me to speak to you, and God bless you all.
U.S. Army veteran and director of the El Surino Senior Center, Samu Noah, also shared a few words.
I am grateful for this country because they have two holidays for military people: the one for the living and the one that have move on to a better place.
Here in El Surino, it's a very patriotic community, and many men and women have served in the armed forces from this community. And so each year, we honor our veterans and those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice by having these ceremonies.
The El Surino Veterans Monument is located in the heart of the El Surino community on Van Horn Avenue and Huntington Drive. The monument had its opening last February. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
L.A. City College also paid tribute to the men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice with its own red, white, and blue celebration. Anna Marcos takes us there.
And it was off to the races for these veterans at L.A. City College. Wheelbarrow races, tire races, centipede push-ups, it was all part of the fun at LACC on Memorial Day. The campus on Vermont Avenue has the largest number of military vets of any city college in the system.
Our numbers show that our veterans at LACC are successful, right?
But it wasn't all fun and games, as some remembered our war heroes on this day. Some are no longer with us. Some have come back to find themselves jobless and homeless. Mayor Eric Garcetti has launched the 10,000 Strong Campaign to connect vets to jobs and has so far connected 7,600. He has also moved to house all homeless veterans, and in less than two years, has put 6,000 in housing.
They fought to give us the right to vote, so we need to vote. They fought for the right for us to be able to have free speech, so we have to respect all people's free speech. They fought for us to be able to practice our religion and love whomever we want. They fought for us to have the American way of life.
LACC even has a memorial wall where you can remember your own fallen war hero with one of these flag cards.
And we're going to be there for as long as it takes to make sure that every veteran on this campus has everything that they need to ensure their success.
Three war veteran students received awards of recognition, including Irene Orell, who's studies in psychology and Chicano Studies have given him a philosophical frame of mind.
You know, one bean and a lima bean, a pinto bean, they're all beans. So we're all beans, and we just have to...
No matter what color.
No matter what color. Some are green, some are black, some are white, some have little dots and everything else, or some are pinto. Oh, boys, they're all different beans. But we're all beans, and we all struggle, we're all in the same pot.
And now, college and city leaders want to make sure our returning vets are part of that pot. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
The event also featured booths and tables offering vets counseling, housing, and other services. While Mother Nature is getting a little help in South L.A., as city leaders and the community mark the opening of the Broadway Neighborhood Stormwater Greenway Project. Anna Marcos has more on how it impacts L.A.'s water. Anna?
Yana, this may look like an average parking lot near the Paradise Baptist Church in South L.A., but it's actually a brand-new water recapturing project that will take 417,000 gallons of stormwater runoff and put them back into L.A.'s groundwater. A huge welcome party for the Broadway Neighborhood Stormwater Greenway Project, which will both beautify the neighborhood and make it cleaner and greener.
Projects like this are great because we need to continuously, continuously implement ways to conserve water and to keep our environment clean.
In the last year, crews dug up the parking lot to put in a giant filtration tank underneath to capture the water. They also built bioswales that will recapture even more water, as well as other improvements.
The other thing is, we installed what we call eight dry wells. What that means is, we went 50 feet down in the ground, and so when the water's flowing on the street, it comes in here, it goes 50 feet down, another place where we can capture groundwater.
Working with 19 local residents, we've been able to help them redo their landscaping so that it becomes more drought tolerant, uses less water, but also includes beautiful native plants that are attracting bees and butterflies.
First of all, based on the drought we've had for the past few years, and so it's a win-win situation.
It's a tool-belt approach to the drought. You know, we've got to do our part to conserve water, but we also got to look where there's opportunities to replenish the water table.
The council office picked up on it, provided the leadership. Others came in to water the seed. It germinated. It's grown. It will start yielding fruit.
This project will provide enough water for 80 L.A. homes. And just think about it, there's about a million homes in L.A. If we do enough of these projects, we will lessen our need for imported water. Yana?
Anna, thanks. City leaders have also installed new trash cans in the area and are building more green alleys with new lighting and stormwater filtration systems. Well, more than ever, L.A.'s the place to be. Jobs and prosperity are returning to the city, but there's still work to be done. Rich Samuels has more.
For some young people, like Artie Cassis, their film industry dreams are already beginning to come true.
You're at the Jim Henson Company.
I'm at the Jim Henson Company.
What are you doing? Tell people what you're doing there.
I'm a set P.A. at the Jim Henson Company.
Yeah.
Yeah. By the way, it's freaking awesome there.
Artie may be on his way to a career in the entertainment industry, but he's one of the lucky ones. For many young people in L.A., landing an entry-level job in L.A.'s signature industry can be tough. Mayor Eric Garcetti wants to change that.
We cannot average out our prosperity. We can't just take the unemployment rate and say, "We're doing great."
The mayor brought together entertainment industry leaders at Getty House recently to push one of his top priorities: getting jobs for the city's youth. With the help of job fairs like this one, 12,000 jobs were created for youth last year, but only a handful came from the entertainment industry.
What we could easily be faced with is a generation of young folks coming in to a business that they might not succeed in.
Mayor Garcetti pointed out that developing more creative career pathways won't just create more jobs for youth, it will build a better and stronger entertainment industry.
But our ability to continue shaping and inspiring imaginations depends on us making sure that the stories that are told and those who are telling the stories look like this city does today.
Industry leaders welcomed the mayor's efforts.
It bridges the gap between the aspiration and the execution of those type of plans.
From the Getty House, the mayor's residents, this is Rich Samuels for L.A. This Week.
The jobs discussion was part of Engage L.A., an ongoing series exploring challenges facing L.A. and fostering public-private partnerships to address them. While the L.A. Conservation Corps celebrated 30 years of providing jobs and second chances to disconnected youth, Gil Reyes reports on the group's daily duties from downtown.
The young people at the L.A. Conservation Corps plant trees, clean streets, and remove graffiti. They're also oftentimes former troubled youth. Like Lucy Gutierrez, she says the Corps changed her life.
Once I earned my GED at the Corps, I was hired as junior staff. After 10 years, I had worked my way up and earned a bachelor's degree in human services.
Gutierrez thanks a teacher at the Corps named Larry who pushed her to succeed. It's one of several stories of redemption heard at the L.A. Conservation Corps' 30th Anniversary Luncheon in downtown.
Hard work and discipline, showing up on time, being in your uniform, taking on the task, getting your education is what this is all about.
Founder and former Commerce Secretary Mickey Cantor receives the Corps' Lifetime Achievement Award. So does former Attorney General and former Conservation Corps President John Van de Kamp. Mayor Eric Garcetti says he will prioritize Corps members and other former troubled youth to help fill 5,000 civil service jobs, a second chance at responsibility through environmental careers.
This becomes not a city that's overwhelming, where we talk about dropping out of school or committing a crime or being unemployed. It suddenly is something that I'm responsible for, that I have a place in.
Gutierrez now works as a Corps case manager, helping today's young people succeed.
I see myself in every single one of them, which is why I work so hard to try to just make it a little bit easier for them. They deserve to have someone believe in them like Larry believed in me.
At the Conservation Corps' 30th Anniversary Gala at the Dorothy Chandler Pavilion, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Young people ages 14 to 24 can apply to the L.A. Conservation Corps. Find out more at lacor.org. Well, city officials need your help in tracking down a suspect who allegedly killed a small dog. Mayor Eric Garcetti launches a competition to address some of the city's challenges, and a major recreation spot is now open for the season. All these stories in City Beat. L.A. City Councilman Paul Corretts joined representatives from animal rights groups to announce a $22,500 reward for information leading to the arrest and conviction of a man who allegedly killed a Yorkshire terrier in Royal Heights last month. Witnesses say the suspect punched the dog several times and threw it on the sidewalk. The suspect is described as white, about six feet two and 280 pounds, with balding gray hair, between 50 and 60 years old. Witnesses also got this picture of the man's van, a late-model silver Dodge Caravan with an off-color bumper.
To me, a person that could and would do something this barbaric has an anger management and cruelty problem that makes him a potential danger, not just to animals, but to humans as well.
If you have any information, call the LAPD at 213-486-0450. Mayor Eric Garcetti is challenging residents to help him find creative solutions to L.A.'s most pressing challenges. Garcetti announced his inaugural Mayor's Cup Competition, which will solicit proposals from student entrepreneurs and local academics to address issues ranging from beautifying vacant and blighted spaces to building affordable housing. College students, faculty members, and staff from Los Angeles colleges and universities are encouraged to enter the competition. Finalists will pitch their ideas to a panel of business and government leaders, including Garcetti. The grand prize winner will receive $25,000 and the opportunity to work with City Hall for eight weeks to bring their idea to life.
So whether you have that great plan to help us build more affordable housing or a brilliant strategy to increase employment opportunities for low-income Angelenos, we want to put your ideas to work.
Los Angeles City Councilmember Mitchell Farrell kicked off the start of the Los Angeles River Recreation Zone and launched the first group of kayakers onto the historic waterway. The United States Army Corps of Engineers is permitting two recreation zones, one in the Glendale-Narrows section of the Elysian Valley and the other in the Sepulveda Basin. O'Farrell collaborated with the Los Angeles Bureau of Sanitation to support this year's recreation zone and will contribute $50,000 to fund the program this season while creating a permanent budget for future seasons. While Mayor Eric Garcetti spoke to college students about targets met so far in his sustainability plan, Gil Reyes has more from UCLA. Gil?
Yes, Yana, here at the Deneve Auditorium in the UCLA campus, Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti touched on a number of topics, including the environment, his sustainability goals, and also what he fears about the future.
You want to see results also in the short term, as well as the medium and long term.
One year into Mayor Eric Garcetti's sustainability plan, and one of the main goals is already on the verge of being met. The plan was a 20% reduction in L.A. city water use by next year. We are now 1% shy of that goal, but the waters off the coast are on his mind, too.
I don't know what's going to happen to life in the oceans, for instance. I mean, will our children be able to see fish in the ocean, you know, beyond a few species?
The mayor, speaking about his plan at the Sustainable Cities Conference at UCLA. Targets met so far include reducing the city's greenhouse gas emissions. They are down 20% from 1990 levels and surpassing a goal of more than 1,000 electric vehicle charging stations. But other work is needed, like replacement of aging water pipes, like the one that burst here at UCLA two years ago, flooding parts of the campus and damaging vehicles. One of the works in progress in the mayor's sustainability plan. Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
For more than 20 years, local kids have scoured our beaches, picking up trash, and this year was no different, as the 23rd Annual Kids Ocean Day kicked off with a massive beach cleanup at Dockweiler State Beach. Anna Marcos has more.
Children at this Kids Ocean Day beach cleanup in Playa del Rey have laid down a little rap on the environment with a spoken-word performance.
And a big, giant fish with large teeth and the skin of gray. But here comes the trash, which makes the food chain crash. There are lives at stake. This is just too much to take.
We came here to pick up the trash and have the environment.
Yeah, like she said, we're here to pick up all the trash, so it won't go in the ocean, and it won't hurt to see animals.
Look at this. Here in L.A., about 4,000 kids from schools all over the city are taking part in cleaning up the beach. In the state of California, about 8,000 kids will take part in the same event.
We're picking up stuff like tar, bottle lids, and caps, because a lot of people leave them here, and then a lot of animals get harmed.
When seagulls pick up something, they get choked.
Kids Ocean Day was created to empower kids to be the change that helps the planet.
The ocean is sick and dying. It's not a laughing matter. The overfishing is destroying the coral reefs. The plastic and litter from the streets is in the ocean and choking us. Fish are eating the plastic in the ocean. We are eating the fish.
If we don't help now, then like the beach won't be here later.
We're here to clean up trash so that animals don't get sick.
Children are our future, and they actually change the behaviors of parents.
And just like that, with a little digging and trash picking, these youngsters have just become environmental activists, out to help make Mother Earth a little healthier and a little cleaner. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
After the event, the kids took part in a giant aerial art performance where they shaped their bodies to form giant bubbles, fish, and dolphins. Well, it was a Cinderella story come true for one special young lady from South L.A. as she embarked on an evening fit for a princess. 17-year-old Jefferson High School student Tykeese Jamerson is getting the royal treatment. A team of makeup and hair professionals is helping her get ready for her big night at prom.
It makes me feel special.
Living in the underserved community of South L.A., Tykeese has faced her share of challenges, including moving from place to place. The First Lady of Council District Nine, Dell Richardson Price, the wife of L.A. Council Member Curran Price, wanted to treat a deserving student to a night of glamour, and Tykeese was chosen.
It makes me highly grateful for it, because the community where I'm from, there's not a lot of people who can afford to do this kind of stuff. And so to have someone bless me with it, it's like very great.
Dell Richardson Price gathered a glam squad that included celebrity fashion designer Angela Dean and celebrity makeup and hairstylist Anthony Walker, known as Sir Tony, to turn Tykeese's Cinderella fairy tale into a prom reality. Her dress was specially designed for the occasion.
I went and made a selection of this beautiful lace and this fancy bottom of jersey that coordinates with this whole thing. And we gave her a little dance at the bottom, so when she's dancing, she'll have a great time. And then the back was our special feature, because this is all, you know, sheer in the back and goes to her waist. She's very tiny and beautiful. But we were just so excited about how it came out and how she would look.
This is my opportunity to make sure that she feels just as wonderful and beautiful as some of the celebrity kinds that I've worked with. I think everyone should experience this, and because she's a grade-A student, this makes it even better.
Despite some of the obstacles she's faced this year, Tykeese plans to attend college and study psychology. The young lady is the co-founder of Sisters Pride at Jefferson High School, a club dedicated to building the self-esteem of young women on campus. As for the end result of her transformation, the beauty in blue was no doubt the bell of the ball. City Councilmember Curran Price continues to launch initiatives to help transform and improve the quality of life for all residents in the new ninth. Well, take the whole family out for a bike ride along the L.A. River, celebrate the art of dance with a dance-along, and getting spooked is only half the fun. All this and this week's things to do. On Sunday, you're going to want to dig that bike out of the garage and take a scenic ride along the Los Angeles River. Benefiting the Los Angeles County Bicycle Coalition, the Los Angeles River Ride is a sporty event where riders can choose to bike distances ranging from 15 miles to 100 miles, and there's also a route for kids. The L.A. River Ride takes place Sunday, June 12, at the Autry National Center, located at 4,700 Western Heritage Way in Griffith Park. For more information, go to la-bike.org. Titled "The Past, Present, and Future of Hip-Hop," the Dance Camera West Dance Media Festival is hosting many events throughout the week, one being at the Museum of Contemporary Art in downtown Los Angeles. The festival includes showcases, film screenings, and dance-alongs. Dance Camera West is celebrating the art form of dance and invites you to come experience its annual festival on Saturday, June 11 at 1:00 P.M. For more, visit danccamerawest.org. If you're looking to get spooked this weekend, you may or may not, depending on your liking for all things horror, want to attend the Great Horror Campout at Elysian Park. This unique event is an interactive one that features a 12-hour campout, including movies, games, ghost stories, and some creepy arts and crafts. Attendees can choose how much horror they would like to experience, and the Great Horror Campout likes to note that no one will actually be in danger, thank goodness. It all takes place on Saturday, June 11, at Elysian Park, located at 835 Academy Road. The movie starts at 7:00 P.M. For more, visit greathorrorcampout.org. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
It all started that one day. I knew then my destiny. To have a career where I can achieve my best, where every day is different, where lifelong friendships are made, where I'm saving lives, and inspiring others. My name is Mackenzie Vandergeest, and I am a Los Angeles firefighter.
Hi, I'm Jen Mahoney in Studio City. You're watching L.A. City View Channel 35, where you can get the best in culture and arts. It's our city, it's our channel.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. If everyone will please take their seats. Shh. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Uh, this is today is Wednesday, June 8th. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Uh, Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Wezar, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Uh, Price moves. Martinez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Uh, Sadio moves. Buscaino seconds. Uh, that brings us where?
Mr. President, there are requests to receive and file 1B and M inasmuch as the liens are paid in full, 1P and Q inasmuch as the department rescinded the late fees and the initial fees were paid in full, 1T and U inasmuch as the properties are owner-occupied single-family dwellings and are exempt from lien processing, 1F inasmuch as there was a full rescission, and for 1D, the department requests to remove all fees except code violation investigation fee, reduce the lien to $336, and receive and file inasmuch as the property is an owner-occupied single-family, and finally, there is a request to continue Item 2 to September 7, 2016.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. Continue.
Items 1 through 16 are items noticed for public hearing.
We have cards?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on 1 and 15.
Let's hold those items. Prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's, uh, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue.
Items 17 through 33 are items for which public hearings have been held, and the committee report for Item 17 has been submitted and circulated.
Mr. Buscaino.
President, I'd like to hold, um, Items 17 and 24, please.
We'll hold those items. Any other? Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, let's move on to the next set of agenda items.
Items 34 through 55 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on Item number 34, 44, 46, 48, 49, and 55.
Let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, Item 57, um, 56 is an item scheduled for a closed session. Would you like to hold that on the desk?
Uh, yes, at this time, yes. We'll hold that item.
Next is on the continuation agenda is Item 57, and that is an item notice for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, so, uh, there is, uh, there are cards, and also, there is, uh, there may be an amending motion.
Okay, so let's hold that. So that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Item called "Special" or "Public Comment on Items Not on the Agenda."
Okay, so before we begin, I'd like to recognize Mr. Curran Price.
Members, I want to acknowledge some very special guests with us this morning from the Aspire In Keep Academy, an elementary school in my district. Students, why don't you stand up, say hi, get yourselves on camera. They're here with our counselor, Manuela Gray. Uh, let's give them a warm welcome. Uh, this is, many have been here for the first time, and so we're excited that you can see, uh, this beautiful building and all the wonderful work that we do in it. So, thank you for being here today.
Mr. Sadio.
I'd like to call Items 25, 26, 27, 28, and 48 forthwith, please.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order.
Sergeants call the members, have them report to the council chambers, so that we can begin our work for today. Sergeants, please call the members, have them report to the council chambers. Members, if you're in your offices, please report to the council chambers. Please report to the council chambers.
Good morning, good morning, good morning. If everyone will please take their seats. Shh. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. Uh, this is, today is Wednesday, June 8th. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, Friday at 10:00 a.m. The public is welcome. Uh, Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Would you please call a roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Wezar, Coretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson, 11 members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Uh, Price moves. Martinez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Uh, Sadio moves. Buscaino seconds. Uh, that brings us where?
Mr. President, there are requests to receive and file 1B and M inasmuch as the liens are paid in full, 1P and Q inasmuch as the department rescinded the late fees and the initial fees were paid in full, 1T and U inasmuch as the properties are owner-occupied single-family dwellings and are exempt from lien processing, 1F inasmuch as there was a full rescission, and for 1D, the department requests to remove all fees except code violation investigation fee, reduce the lien to $336, and receive and file inasmuch as the property is an owner-occupied single-family, and finally, there is a request to continue Item 2 to September 7, 2016.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. Continue.
Items 1 through 16 are items noticed for public hearing.
We have cards?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on 1 and 15.
Let's hold those items. Prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's, uh, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue.
Items 17 through 33 are items for which public hearings have been held, and the committee report for Item 17 has been submitted and circulated.
Mr. Buscaino.
President, I'd like to hold, um, Items 17 and 24, please.
We'll hold those items. Any other? Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, let's move on to the next set of agenda items.
Items 34 through 55 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, Mr. President, there are cards on Item number 34, 44, 46, 48, 49, and 55.
Let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, Item 57, um, 56 is an item scheduled for a closed session. Would you like to hold that on the desk?
Uh, yes, at this time, yes. We'll hold that item.
Next is on the continuation agenda is Item 57, and that is an item notice for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, so, uh, there is, uh, there are cards, and also, there is, uh, uh, there may be an amending motion.
Okay, so let's hold that. So that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Item called "Special" or "Public Comment on Items Not on the Agenda."
Okay, so before we begin, I'd like to recognize Mr. Curran Price.
Members, I want to acknowledge some very special guests with us this morning from the Aspire In Keep Academy, an elementary school in my district. Students, why don't you stand up, say hi, get yourselves on camera. They're here with our counselor, Manuela Gray. Uh, let's give them a warm welcome. Uh, this is, many have been here for the first time, and so we're excited that you can see, uh, this beautiful building and all the wonderful work that we do in it. So, thank you for being here today.
Mr. Sadio.
I'd like to call Items 25, 26, 27, 28, and 48 forthwith, please.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Are we having a technical glitch?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Sadio moves. Buscaino seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, there are requests to receive and file: One B and M inasmuch as the liens are paid in full; One P and Q inasmuch as the department rescinded the late fees and the initial fees were paid in full; One T and U inasmuch as the properties are owner-occupied single-family dwellings and are exempt from lien processing; One F inasmuch as there was a full rescission; And for One D, the department requests to remove all fees except code violation investigation fee, reduce the lien to $336, and receive and file inasmuch as the property is an owner-occupied, single-family; And finally, there is a request to continue Item 2 to September 7, 2016.
Okay, so without objection, that will be the order. Continue.
Items 1 through 16 are items noticed for public hearing.
We have cards?
Yes, Mr. President. There are cards on 1 and 15.
Let's hold those items. Prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Continue.
Items 17 through 33 are items for which public hearings have been held, and the committee report for Item 17 has been submitted and circulated.
Mr. Buscaino.
President, I'd like to hold Items 17 and 24, please.
We'll hold those items. Any other? Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, let's move on to the next set of agenda items.
Items 34 through 55 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, Mr. President. There are cards on Item Number 34, 44, 46, 48, 49, and 55.
Let's hold those items and prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That brings us where?
Mr. President, Item 57, 56 is an item scheduled for a closed session. Would you like to hold that on the desk?
Yes, at this time, yes. We'll hold that item.
Next is, on the continuation agenda, is Item 57, and that is an item notice for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, there is, there are cards, and also there is, there may be an amending motion.
Okay, so let's hold that. So that brings us where?
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations. Item called "Special," or "Public Comment" on items not on the agenda.
Okay, so before we begin, I'd like to recognize Mr. Curran Price.
Members, I want to acknowledge some very special guests with us this morning from the Aspire &amp; Keep Academy, an elementary school in my district. Students, why don't you stand up? Say hi. Get yourselves on camera. They're here with our counselor, Manuela Gray. Let's give them a warm welcome. This is, many have been here for the first time, and so we're excited that you can see this beautiful building and all the wonderful work that we do in it. So, thank you for being here today.
Mr. Sadio.
I'd like to call Items 25, 26, 27, 28, and 48 forthwith, please.
Okay, without objection, that'll be the order. Are we having a technical glitch?
Thank you. Let's hear it for the trans chorus of Los Angeles. Beautiful voices, beautiful music, beautiful song, perfect sentiment for the day. Mr. President, our apologies for making a little noise outside in the hall while you were trying to get started. It's a festive day, and we're excited to be celebrating yet again LGBT Pride Month, LGBT Heritage Month here in the city of Los Angeles. Today, as has been the tradition since, I believe, 2007, we have the privilege of honoring legends and leaders in the LGBT community, putting spotlight, putting a spotlight on the pioneers who make life better for the entire community here in Los Angeles. Councilman Rosendale started this tradition shortly after he took office, and it blossomed from just a celebration here into a whole Heritage Month celebration, befitting of the community. Different years have had different focuses. There was a year when we honored legislative legends, and Sheila Kuehl was here. And there was a year when we honored journalistic icons, and Greg Hernandez was here, and Karen Oakham was here. And there were years when we honored the new pioneers, the new activists who came up as a result of the crushing blow that we took with Proposition 8, the new generation that came up. And there was a year when we honored the seniors within our community, those who had been at the forefront of our battle for equality for, literally, for generations. Today, we honor the T in LGBT. Earlier this year, Mayor Garcetti formed the first transgender advisory council in a big city in the United States. And it was a huge and important step. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And at the time, when we were talking about it here in council, I said I thought it was time that we put the T first in the battle for LGBT equality. Because as we've seen across the country over the past year, whether it's bathrooms, or whether it's bullying, the people who have a focus most intensely of discrimination, of bigotry, of hatred, of violence, are the members of the trans community. And being one of the members of the LGBT community who has been awarded so much by so many over the past few years in our battle for equality, having the right finally to marry, it is incumbent upon all of us to put the T first and understand that it is our obligation to fight for their equality and to fight for their justice and to fight for their acceptance. So today, we honor the T in LGBT. I want to also note and thank the Human Relations Commission as well as the Transgender Advisory Council for helping us put this together today. This has been a collective effort of so many different people, and it's important to note all of them. There's a number of folks you're going to hear from today before we present our awardees. The first person I just referred to is the mayor of the city of Los Angeles. There was a time when there were no LGBT members of the city council. And in Los Angeles, we've always been fortunate that we have had people, straight allies, who have taken up the cause as well as any member of the LGBT community. And for a very long time, that member of the city council who was doing that was then-councilman Eric Garcetti. There is no better mayor, there is no better friend to the LGBT community than Eric Garcetti, and it's my honor to introduce him this morning.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike, for your overly kind words, and thank you for your amazing framing of this day, this month, and this moment in time. And thank you so much as well to Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell, to our great comptroller, Ron Galperin, joined here as well by our great city attorney, Mike Fuhr, and to all the members of the city council, Mr. President, and to our great chorus before us. It is a time for our voices to be heard, and the beauty which brought us into these chambers, which I always refer to as a temple of democracy, a place where everybody who comes here, you can be the mayor, or you can be a person without a home, and this microphone makes us all equal. That's the vision of this society, of this city, and of this world. It was on these steps where we had the first transgender job fair in the nation's history, we believe, over a decade ago. And something that reminded us back then that even within communities, voices are missed, are written out, are ignored, and we do so at our own peril. Lives lost, literally, lives hidden for generations or entire lives. But LA doesn't have to take second fiddle to any place in this nation or this world when it comes forward to pushing human rights. It was here that we had the first gay and lesbian pride parade west of the Mississippi. It was here that the first organization of then-gay men, the Mattachine Society, came together in Silverlake in the great 13th district where Mitch O'Farrell and I put up some history of the plaques. It was the Black Cat where our LAPD officers went after people for whom they loved and how they looked before even we saw that happen in New York. It was here in Los Angeles where those battles have been fought, and indeed, those battles have been won. And I'm so proud to join, not only to form an advisory council that will help policy and procedures of the city impact all people equally and to make sure that a trans voice is heard, but also to work with each one of you on this city council, to see what we can do to inspire other cities to do the same. We know the stats. For the T community, this is something which is harrowing, and it should be for all of us, that over 2/3 of trans folks attempt suicide, that we see over 90% of them bullied or attacked. Imagine for a moment, whatever groups you're a part of, that that's you. Imagine that every single day you wake up unable to be who you are and who you know you've always been. It should be our goal to make sure that that is unacceptable anywhere. And I won't get partisanly political, but last night was a piece of American history. We saw a page turn, and whether you're Republican, or Democrat, or Independent, a woman became the first nominee of a party, a major American party, to run for president. And while it will seem now easy every day afterwards because that threshold has been crossed, that's why we're here. Because those trans moments, like we took the bathrooms the day after we signed the executive action on making sure that this city is looking at policies that will affect trans Angelinos, we made all the single-use bathrooms gender-neutral that day to be a strong counter to what we see around the nation. So, in conclusion, we saw people use our brothers and sisters in this city and in this country as weapons in this campaign. It mirrored what happened 40 years, 50 years before, when bathrooms for colored folks and for white folks were segregated off by signs. We cannot go backwards. We cannot allow that to happen. And here in Los Angeles, let us sing proud. Let us sing strong. Let us move forward, and let us be a beacon of hope this incredible month of action, not just of commemoration. Thank you so much.
Mr., Mr. Bonin? If I could say that I truly enjoyed our trans chorus, but are we gonna make them stand until we bring them back up to sing again? Maybe they could go back?
They were waiting for permission from the council president.
Is that what it was? Because it was bothering me. So, please have a seat. And again, thank you, and we look forward to hearing from you a little later. Back to you, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and on behalf of the chorus, thank you, because I think they look relieved to be sitting down now. I'd like to turn the microphone over for a minute to my LGBT colleague on the city council. There has never before this council been more than one LGBT elected official in the city of Los Angeles. And in 2013, we were very lucky that not only was, there are two members of the city council who are of the LGBT community, but we got a citywide office holder in Mr. Ron Galperin. On this council, Mr. O'Farrell has been a huge advocate, obviously, for the LGBT community, but really has been, I think, the voice in the city who has been the fiercest advocate and the greatest champion for the transgender community, Mitch O'Farrell. Thank you so much, Mike. I couldn't be more honored to serve on this Los Angeles City Council with my gay brother, Mike Bonin. Thank you. Yeah, I just outed Mike Bonin. Sorry, Mike. I know you didn't want it that way. Colleagues, this is a transcendent moment. Right? Things are changing in this country. We have so much passion, knowledge, experience, and context right here in Los Angeles. Going back to what the mayor referred to as the Black Cat protests from New Year's Eve, 1966 into 1967, what started the riots and protests was a same-sex kiss in the Black Cat Tavern in Silverlake. We've come a long way since that year, almost 50 years ago now. And it is trailblazer, the trailblazers that were about to honor today, Bambi Salcedo, Riku Matsuda, Drian Juarez, and Jayden Fields, whose courage and vision paved the way for the next big positive change in this movement, the T-L-G-B movement. I'll throw in Q as well. We'll add a Q. May we always remember how far we've come, never ever forget those countless stories that we'll never really know, but we know that those before us have sacrificed everything, their livelihood, their, their, their well-being, their psychological well-being, just to live or try to carve away a space where they could live and be who they are. But until fairly recently, it was never allowed in public. And, folks, that is the definition of no civil rights. And when one sector of our society doesn't have civil rights, we should all be very concerned, and it is my belief that none of us have full civil rights if one sector of our society doesn't have full civil rights. Thank you. So just last month, the Obama administration issued a federal executive directive that all public school districts in the country must allow transgender students to use the bathroom or restroom that matches their gender identity. The purpose was to ensure that transgender students enjoy a supportive and non-discriminatory school environment. And you just heard our mayor mention his directive for all city facilities as well. It is time for our local regulations to be analyzed and updated for consistency with state law and now the Obama administration's directive. Today, we will introduce a motion that will begin the process to allow gender-neutral restrooms throughout Los Angeles and into the 21st, and bring LA into the 21st century. It doesn't get much more basic than you just need to go use the restroom. And why should you have to live in fear or shame just to do that? We have partnered with the Department of Cultural Affairs, One Archives, and Freedom to Marry to display a first-of-its-kind collection of front page, the front pages of major newspapers across the country following each state's ruling in favor of the freedom to marry. That exhibit is in the Bridge, and it'll be up throughout the month of June. Thank you, One Archives. Thank you, Freedom to Marry. And thank you to our partner, the Department of Cultural Affairs. Thank you. The exhibit is open to all, as I mentioned. I also want to invite everyone to an annual exhibit that my office co-hosts at the Hollywood Museum at the Historic Max Factor Building, and it's reel-to-reel portrayals and perceptions of gays in Hollywood. Features photos, costumes, props, iconic imagery that showcase how gays and lesbians have been portrayed in Hollywood from early stereotypes to modern representations. The exhibit opens tomorrow night, and I encourage everyone to join us in that celebration. We are still keenly aware that even with all the progress we've made, with all the minds that we've changed and the hearts that we've opened, there is more work to do in Los Angeles and across the country for our lesbian, gay, bisexual brothers, transgender brothers and sisters, especially the transgender community that Mike mentioned is a highlight of the focus today and this month. Our work continues. We stand proudly, shoulder to shoulder, as one tribe, all people, all colors. Thank you. So there was a time in Los Angeles when it was conceivable that an LGBT elected official could get elected in one district. It was, for a very long time, inconceivable that someone who was gay or lesbian could be elected citywide in Los Angeles. And that happened just a couple of years ago, and it was a huge yawn. It wasn't a big deal. The world had changed, and when Ron Galperin ran for citywide office and won, the fact that he was gay made absolutely no difference in the world. Now, just because there was a yawn over his orientation doesn't mean that anybody has ever yawned over Ron Galperin. He has kept things exciting. He has on today the gayest necktie I have ever seen. He was working on me a little bit earlier, Mr. Wesson, and told me he was going to take me tie shopping. And I saw this one, and I said, "No way." I'm firmly in the necktie closet. Ron Galperin, our city comptroller.
Let's give Ryan a round of applause.
Thank you, Councilman Bonin, for that wonderful introduction. And thank you, Council President, to our mayor, to our city attorney, to, to all of those who are here. It's really an honor to be among such leadership that supports LGBTQ equality in Los Angeles. And my husband, Zach Shapiro, and I could not be luckier to live in a city such as Los Angeles. We are very, very grateful for...
We are very, very grateful for that. The story of L.A.'s LGBTQ movement resonates throughout the nation. This month, as our council member mentioned, we celebrate the legacies of those who broke through barriers in a variety of fields and communities to make L.A. a much more vibrant, much more tolerant, much more inclusive place to live and work. And also, one of the things that was mentioned here was that exhibit which is on the Bridge. It really headlines all of these newspapers around the country that announced for once the triumph of love, as it were. And it's really also appropriate, I think, that it's on the Bridge, because we're on a bridge from yesterday to tomorrow, and on a bridge that is really about how do we progress as a society, as a city, as a world. Like all of you, I wish we could say that we've really fully crossed the Bridge, but of course, we know that is not the case. We've mentioned North Carolina's bathroom laws as just one example of the intolerance that still exists. There's still quite a way to go for full equality and inclusion for, notably, our trans brothers and sisters and all expressions of gender identity and of diversity. So during this month of celebration, let us, and you'll excuse the puns here, walk across that Bridge. Let us salute the people who have transformed our city, who have transcended ignorance and led the way, transitioned into a more welcoming place, as we can be more transparent about who it is that we love. Let it be blasted as if on a transistor radio and transcribed for posterity, and let's celebrate love, culture, identity, and one another. Thank you very much.
And now for someone wearing a decidedly straight-neck tie.
I could rock Galperin's tie. Certain people could do that. I could wear that tie. Let's give the tie a round of applause.
But can you pull off the matching pocket square, is the question?
I'm gay.
You're gay? So, I mentioned Mayor Garcetti's record as an incredible straight ally. There's someone who rivals that record, and that's our city attorney, Mike Fuhrer. When I first started working in this building in the mid-'90s, Mike Fuhrer was on this council along with Jackie Goldberg. And it wasn't always clear to me that Jackie was the one who was going to be introducing the LGBT-friendly legislation. It was as likely as not to be Mike Fuhrer. Both here in Los Angeles and in Sacramento, there has been nobody who has been more intent on making sure that every member of this community is treated equally under the law. And it's an honor to have him here today, Mike Fuhrer.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you very much, Mike. So if you, like me, were wondering which member of Mr. Galperin's staff was charged with finding every word that begins with T-R-A-N-S, I don't have that kind of opportunity, so I'm going to speak a little differently for just a moment. You know, we've been talking today about a key theme, and it pervades every speaker's comments, and that is the progress we've made, how far we've come. You know, last year, when we celebrated this very important month, there was no marriage equality in the United States. Now there is, of course. One of the proudest moments I've had as city attorney was when our office took the lead in writing a brief on behalf of hundreds of cities and mayors and organizations throughout the United States in the Supreme Court. And there are members of my staff who are here today who are proud examples of what it means to be a real leader, not just as a lawyer, but as a proud member of the LGBTQ community. Speaking of those staff members, it wasn't very long ago, in fact, it wasn't more than a couple of years ago, that there was no association of city attorneys for the LGBTQ community. Now there is. So much progress. But you know, I do think it's imperative, as the mayor said, that we make the transition from commemoration to action. And let's remember a few things. There's marriage equality throughout the country, but in state after state and as a matter of federal law, there's no protection for people whose employment may be jeopardized because of their sexual orientation. Think about that for a second. Oh, yeah, you can get married one day and get fired the next, simply because of who you are. That really compels us to reflect on the meaning of one word, and that word is our humanity. This day, as much as any other day, is a commemoration of our common humanity, which calls us to action. And not just symbolic action either. I'm pleased to see us take concrete steps toward full equality for everyone, to recognize that when a young child is growing up in this city, that they can look in the mirror and be proud of who they are, rather than wonder how the rest of their community, whether it be their school, or their neighborhood, or their city, will treat them. That's the best of Los Angeles. So I'm very proud to be here today, to join with our colleagues in celebrating this day. But the real test of us is not going to be the celebration today. The real test is going to be, what do we do tomorrow? Thank you, Mr. President.
So now it's time for the highlight of the program. It's time for the awards, those we're honoring here today. So if Bambi could come up first. A familiar face to many in this building. Bambi is the president and the CEO of Trans Latina Coalition. That's a national organization that focuses on addressing the issues of transgender Latinas in the United States. Are we doing a selfie in the middle of this? Bambi has brought both voice and visibility to the transgender community and to the overlapping communities and to the overlapping issues that her life has touched. And that includes immigration, HIV, youth, LGBT incarceration, and the Latina communities. She has a sense of instinctive leadership, and as a result of that, she has founded, literally created, several organizations that created community where previously there was none. Bambi is an exceptional example of a leader who understands the interconnectivity of social justice, and I want to extend my gratitude to Bambi on behalf of the city for everything she has done for the city and for the transgender community.
Thank you. Oh, okay.
Everyone, everyone's in.
Everyone's in. Bring us in. Oh, nice. Okay. Bueno, primero que nada, quiero darle gracias a mi poder superior. Buenos dias a todos y a todas. Quiero darle gracias a mi madre que esta aqui presente. Can I, can we give a round of applause to my mom who is present here? I, obviously, first, I want to thank Councilmember Bonin for, you know, this honor and this privilege. And of course, I want to acknowledge and thank our mayor, who has been a champion for our issues here in the city. So thank you so much. But can I also ask that all people who are trans and gender nonconforming, if you could please stand up so that we can acknowledge you? Can we please acknowledge them as we really mean it? Like, can we please acknowledge them as we really mean it? Thank you. The reason I did that is because we, as trans people, are not often acknowledged. And it is important that we understand and that we realize that we, as trans individuals, are part of our society, we're part of our community, we are part of the whole. But for many of us, unfortunately, we are not able to enjoy what life is. As we know, in 2016, at least 13 trans women have been murdered, and other young people have taken their lives, simply because they're not able to live their lives authentically. And I think it's also important that although this is an LGBT month, and specifically recognizing the trans community, I want to echo with what some of our council members and even our mayor express about really, you know, taking the step further, right? Taking really into heart. And what I want for all of us to really think and really take with us is to think about I. If I could be open-minded, if I could open my heart, if I could be sensitive, if I could open the door for my brother and my sister who is trans, if I could be someone who can make a change, who can acknowledge, who can make a difference in the lives of a trans person, please make sure that you do that. I hope that you can intentionally do this for our community. But I also want to say to the city and to all of the council members and to all of the elected officials, that it is important that we intentionally invest in the lives of trans people. We need to invest money, because money is power. Trans people do not have the economic power to simply be and function in our society. So I charged you for you to take this to heart and intentionally invest into the needs of trans people so that we can all together change the livelihood of our community. Thank you so much.
It gives me great pleasure to introduce our next honoree, and that is Riku Matsuda. Riku leads, Riku leads the Los Angeles County Commission on Human Relations' work to end violence against transgender and non-binary communities. He is an analyst for the annual Hate Crime Report and a seasoned facilitator trained in community mediation. Riku also serves as the commission's liaison to the Anti-Bullying Coalition, the Media Image Coalition, and the Transgender Service Provider Network. Riku also serves as a governing board member of Gender Justice Los Angeles. I want to extend my gratitude to Riku for working to protect the transgender and non-binary community in Los Angeles. Riku Matsuda.
You're welcome. You can nod it. There's that. Lower it, lower it. And if I can move in?
You can stand up.
Yeah, you can stand up.
Okay. Get down?
No, no, you're not.
Get up. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Okay. Cool. Thank you so much, council member. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Love that it's everybody's instinct to clap along with me. Councilmember Harris Dawson, it's great to see you again. We go way back, so I'll hesitate with my comments because I know that it's brief. Bambi already did the stand if you're trans and gender nonconforming, so the city comptroller already did my trans jokes. I know, I know you all have it in your heart to do what Bambi just asked you to do, and I appreciate the mayor, although I was going to pressure him, to take action. I want to encourage all of you to take all of that action in your own districts as well. Get to know the trans and gender nonconforming people who live in your neighborhoods, in your districts. Build with them. I recently heard someone in the county say, "If it's not earmarked, it doesn't happen." So on the note that Bambi was mentioning about monies, sorry to bring it up. We will continue to do that because we're strong advocates for our community, and we know that we need, thank you, we know that we need your support, and we stand before you with the support, as you can see in the audience, of an incredibly diverse trans and gender nonconforming community here in Los Angeles, throughout the county. We are just four people, and we're friends, we're comrades, we're community members. We do this work together every day, all the time, and we welcome you, our cis-gen, I don't know, I don't know your identities, so I'm not going to assume. But for those of you who are not trans and gender nonconforming, council members and Mr. President, or I don't know that you're a Mr. President, I only heard people call you Mr. President. But people are always open to change, and we welcome you. And in other words, we welcome you to be our allies, to build with us as cisgender and straight identified folks. And for those of you who are transgender, nonconforming, lesbian, gay, bisexual, questioning, and queer, we welcome you. Please build with us. Please remember us in your policies and your budgets. And if you need our cards and our phone numbers, we're here to work with you. So thank you so much. It's a great honor. And to our community members, please, one more round of applause for our community.
Colleagues, our next honoree is Drian Juarez. Drian, come on up. Drian has served as program manager for the Los Angeles LGBT Center's Transgender Economic Empowerment Project. You call it TEEP, right?
TEEP, yes.
TEEP. Under her direction, TEEP has worked with more than 1,000 homeless transgender people to help them with basic housing needs and helping them transition from the streets into empowering career paths and job opportunities. In her role, she has developed a coalition of grassroots organizations that they help meet, to identify and serve the specific needs of the transgender community. She's collaborated with homeless shelters to provide housing and basic living needs. She's coordinated with nonprofits and schools to offer basic job training, and she's taught over 500 employers in law enforcement, government entities, and businesses on the unique issues faced by the transgender community. She is, one by one, talking to people, building organizations, and making change on behalf of Los Angeles and on behalf of the transgender community. She has a very powerful story, which she has shared publicly about the bullying she suffered and how about her grandmother loved, nurtured, and taught her to be her true self. I don't want to say too much about it in case it's the story that she is intending to share in a minute, so, thank you.
Thanks. No, stand up, stand up.
Good morning, familia, community, loved ones. I would like to take this time to thank councilmembers Mike Bonin, Mitch O'Farrell, Mayor Eric Garcetti, Ron Galperin, Mike Fuhrer, the Los Angeles City Council, Department of Cultural Affairs, my work family at the LGBT Center's Legal Services Department, and everyone who worked to bring this amazing event to fruition. I am incredibly humbled and honored to be here amongst such inspiring leaders. Bambi, you are a fierce goddess. Riku, you bring love and compassion to all that you do. Jaden, your warmth and positivity shine brightly. One of the definitions of heritage is something that is passed down from preceding generations, a tradition. As trans people, our heritage is one of fearless authenticity, and it is our tradition to respect people for who they say they are. During this day of celebration, let us remember all of those who have passed so that our heritage could continue, and let us honor their memories by creating a world where people are respected for who they say they are, can use the bathroom of their choice, and can live lives that are free of violence. Thank you once again for this amazing honor, and let's continue our heritage of respect.
Last today, but certainly not least, is our honoree, Jaden Fields. Jaden is an L.A.-born, queer, black, femme, trans man, community activist, and poet. Jaden sounds pretty fierce to me. He currently works as a health educator at APAIT, A-P-A-I-T, running the HART program. HART is an HIV education and transgender empowerment program for transgender HART is an HIV education and transgender empowerment program for transgender people of color, a community that currently holds the highest HIV contraction rate in Los Angeles. He's a core member and support group facilitator of the grassroots, community-based organization Trans Folks Fighting Eating Disorders, TFEED, and travels within to various conferences to raise awareness about how transgender and gender nonconforming individuals are disproportionately affected by eating disorders, usually as a coping mechanism for dealing with trauma. I want to extend my gratitude to Jaden for working to eliminate HIV and eating disorders within the transgender community in Los Angeles. Jaden, we all celebrate and welcome you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Bonin, Councilwoman Mitch O'Farrell, City Controller Ralph Galperin, and the City of Los Angeles for this distinguished honor today. When I think of the heritage of the LGBT community, I think of fight. I think of the folks who came before and the ones who paved the way, especially the trans women and trans femmes of color. I think of their resilience, and I think of how grateful I am for their existence because without them, it would be harder for people like me to exist today. I think of the other honorees today who have all directly influenced my consciousness and my activism and to whom I'm forever grateful. I also think of privilege. Whose stories do we get to hear? While I'm extremely grateful to live in a city wherein it is even possible for me to live authentically, it is still a privilege and one that I do not take lightly. Now that I get to have a place at the table, I need to think about whose narrative is still missing here. Someone recently asked me what I think my role as a leader is in our community, and honestly, because of the identities I hold, my very existence is extremely political, and my visibility gets to somehow be revolutionary. When I think of leadership, it isn't about getting recognition for some of the work that I get to do. It's about constantly thinking beyond myself. It's about challenging myself to see who isn't in the room and what can I do to change that. It's about holding space for us to share the narratives our bodies hold. It's about being committed to our collective healing. It's about continuing to honor the lives of those we've lost to horrific and often state-sanctioned violence while fighting for and uplifting those of us who are still here. It's about listening and learning. It's about remembering that this isn't just my fight. So how do I get to show up for you, and how do we show up for each other? Thank you.
Again, a round of applause for Bambi and for Driyan and for Jaden and for Riku. Mr. President, I'd like to throw it back to you for any additional comments anybody has before we end with the trans choir.
And thank you. And before I call on Mr. Corretts, I just want to say that we are excited and happy to have you here with us. This is, in fact, a celebration. Think about where we have been and where we are now, and hopefully where we will be going. I remember when I was Speaker of the California State Assembly and I created the first LGBT caucus, and I was proud, and I'm proud of all of you. But I just want to say this: We are at a crossroads, and it's time for us to get serious because there are so many forces out there that want to turn us all back, that want us to just go back to a good old time. And that might have been good old for them, but it wasn't good old for us. So we still have a lot to work to do, and we must keep our eye on the prize and recognize that together we cannot be defeated. With that said, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could, actually, I just want to respond to something Mr. Weston just said. I had the privilege on Saturday of going to see, as part of the Los Angeles Film Festival, the world premiere of a documentary called Political Animals. And it's a documentary about Shillikul and Carol Mighdan and Jackie Goldberg and Christine Keough, and it's about the struggles they went through in the '90s and in the early 2000s in the state legislature, the hatred they faced among their colleagues, the incredibly repugnant comments they had to endure, and the work they did to get protection for students through, and the work they did to get a domestic partnership through. And in that, I saw a clip of you, Mr. Weston. I saw a clip of you standing up in a heated debate over a registry for domestic partners. And I heard you get up, and I heard you say to your lesbian colleagues, "Please have a seat. Let this be our fight. Let this be the fight of the straight community. Let this be the fight of the African-American and the Latino and the API community." It was an amazing speech, and I want to thank you for that.
Well, thank you, and it's an honor to have all of you here in our chambers today. Most of you don't know me, but I've been active in LGBT issues my entire adult life. I really started after high school because I saw friends of mine that were mistreated and insulted, and in high school, I really didn't know what to do about it, and I felt that I did nothing and felt very badly about that. So in 1975, the Stonewall LGBT Democratic Club was created, and I was the first straight male to join that club. And I can tell you, that wasn't a particular popular thing at the time. I helped to found the city of West Hollywood. I ran the campaign for Valerie Torino, who was the first open lesbian ever-elected mayor of an American city, and helped elect a gay majority in that city. And I also helped to write the first anti-discrimination ordinance that banned discrimination of any kind against anyone in the LGBT community. And we wrote it in such a way that Barney's Beanery, which had a famous sign that said, "Faggots stay out," that that sign was removed once we passed that ordinance. I've been active in many other ways over the years, especially in the state legislature at the time that was discussed. Right after Prop 22 was passed, I introduced a civil union bill, which was sort of a poke in the eye of that whole effort. And it was, it went down in flames, but it was the first step. And domestic partnership and gay marriage followed pretty quickly. The one thing I wasn't that familiar with when I got involved with West Hollywood was the transgender community, and I really didn't know about the high rate of suicide and the high rate of unemployment and the high rate of violence and discrimination and family rejection. And I have tried in whatever ways I could to change that. And of all the things I've done legislatively, one of the things of which I'm most proud is, over 10 years ago, I got a measure passed that banned discrimination in healthcare and said that you can't deny an insurance policy and you can't deny any benefits based on the fact that someone is transgender. And in the 10 years since, we've seen a lot of progress. We've seen a lot more visibility. We actually now know people who are transgender in the film and television industry. We've seen a lot of progress, but this is still sort of the last frontier of discrimination. There's still a lot of people that think it's okay to discriminate against trans individuals, and I'm glad that we here in the City of Los Angeles are taking a strong stand to say that that's not okay, and transgender individuals need to have not only every protection that we have, but they need our support and encouragement. And I'm very proud of the City of Los Angeles for doing everything that we do in that regard. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Corretts, and you are right, hate ain't okay. I'm going to kick it back to you now, Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. With your permission, I'm going to ask the chorus to stand again and come back up.
Wait, I thought that was my line. You took --
I was told I have to cue them up before the calendar comes on up. We are going, as you know, for each of these festivals, the Department of Cultural Affairs does an amazing job producing a calendar of events and celebrations. And they have an amazing one, again, for this celebration. I'd like to ask representatives from Department of Cultural Affairs to come on up to unveil this year's calendar, and it's going to be unveiled by the couple who are featured on the cover of the booklet, who are themselves a transgender couple.
All right.
Thanks again to the Department of Cultural Affairs for the incredible work that they do for these heritage events. And with that, thank you very much, colleagues, and Mr. Weston, for the privilege of doing this presentation today. We will close with another number from the trans chorus of Los Angeles.
The floor is yours. Go right ahead, trans chorus.
Once again, we'd like to thank you, Mr. President, for allowing us to come in and share your space today. We'd like to thank all of the council members as well. And we're going to ask you all to join us in singing a song called "Heroes We Could Be" because that's what we're called. And so it goes, "We could be heroes." Let me hear you. "We could be heroes." And then we're going to, "Ooh, ready? Ooh." And then it's, "We could be heroes. We could be heroes. Me and you, ready? Me and you." We go hide away in daylight. We go undercover when under sun. Got a secret side in plain sight. Where the streets are empty, that's where we run. Everyday people do everyday things, but I can't be one of them. I know you hear me now, we are a different kind. We can't do anything. We could be heroes. We could be heroes. We could be heroes. Me and you. Me and you. We could be. We could be heroes. We could be heroes. We could be heroes. Me and you. Turn the rock at it, baby. Anybody's got the power. Anybody's got the power. They'll see it because they don't understand. Spin around and round for hours. You and me, we got the world in our hands. Everyday people do everyday things, but I can't be one of them. I know you hear me now, we are a different kind. We can't do anything. We could be heroes. We could be heroes. We could be, come on! We could be heroes. Me and you. Me and you. We could be heroes. We could be heroes. We could be heroes. We could be heroes. Me and you. We could be heroes. We could be heroes. We could be heroes. Me and you. All we're looking for is love. We could be. All we're looking for is love and a little light. Love and a little light. We could be. All we're looking for is love and a little light. Love and a little. We could be heroes. We could be heroes. We could be heroes. Me and you. We could be. We could be. The trans chorus of Los Angeles.
We should go in the back and get some photos.
Again, we want to thank all of you for coming. Mr. Bonin and Mr. O'Farrell, you did a great job in today's celebration. Madam Clerk, we are going to reconsider two items at this time, item 32 and item 45. If we could vote on reconsideration, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, we'll hold item 32. We'll move forward on item 45. I have a card from Mr. Walsh, Mr. John Walsh, item 45. Mr. Walsh, item 45.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dams. This is an exemption. Let me tell you what exemption means. The charter and the city, they vote on qualifications for someone to be appointed to these high-paying jobs. Then somebody gets on his kneepads in front of the mayor and gets picked, who doesn't have the qualifications. So they come up here and make an exemption so that person who is unqualified for the civil service job gets the job. This is auditing. This is very important auditing because then, when, say, Mr. Rue pulls some shit, this person who isn't qualified won't catch him. HollywoodHighlands.org, stay tuned.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll and close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's move now to item 55. Ms. Ramirez, Antonia Ramirez, item 55.
Thank you very much. On behalf of my deceased parents, Antonio y Josefina Ramirez, I can tell you how great it was growing up in New York City, the Big Apple, with truly liberated and uncensored, brilliant, and truthful, thriving minds. My parents loved the Italian people because they were very good to us, and especially to my father. Every Sunday, we would go to church, go past the Jewish community, and go to Italian neighborhoods and go for our weekly Italian Ices. The Italians knew us there, very different from California Italians, but the great Italians always gave jobs to my father, working in the shipyards, loading docks. The Italians always chose my father over other Italians for jobs, and because they liked my father, who was punctual, disciplined, structured, diligent, studious, who went to night school every day, and he was neat, clean, organized, and took great pride in his jobs. every day, and he was neat, clean, organized, and took great pride in his jobs. And he never complained, moaned, bitched, and whined. And that is why the Italians loved my father. And I tell you, the Italians truly were great in New York City when I went to school with them as well. They were fantastic, great sense of humor, and they spoke what they thought. And that is what I loved about the Italians in New York City, much different from California Italians. They were like the Al Capones, man. They shot the bazookas out of their mouth. It was great. That's what made the Italians so innovative, so creative, so enjoyable, and so humorous. Oh, God, I love those Italians out there. And I'm so grateful that my father also had a love for people's cultures. He never attacked anybody's cultures. He loved all people, all races, and all cultures, and he especially loved the Italians. God bless the Italian people in New York City with great minds. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gus, I don't have a card.
I'll fill one out.
Okay, come on then.
Thank you, Harab. I appreciate that. One minute only, please, one minute only. I see that it says, "Fund any aspect of the Italian-American Heritage Fund Month," and $10,000 to fund any aspect of the San Pedro shred. Concerned that any aspect qualifications aren't applied universally to other similar cultural events. But I'd also like to know where Mr. Englander is and why he approved that. We know that Mr. Englander came in fifth last night, and I'm wondering why he's absent on an agenda item where he seconded it. So where is Mitch Englander, fifth-place finisher for county supervisor?
Let's stay on the subject.
Okay, all right. Well, I believe Mr. Englander would support this, but he's got a big headache today. Maybe he's been partying too much?
Let's stay on the subject.
Okay, all right. Englander, fifth place, one minute.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fourth with, the request of Mr. Buscagino. Mr. Buscagino, item 17.
Yes, thank you. If we can call Ms. Sutton to come forward. I want to thank Mr. Weezer and his committee for approving this recommendation from Mayor Garcetti to appoint Ms. Mona Sutton to the harbor. You can come sit at the table, ma'am. Appoint Mona Sutton to the Harbor Area Planning Commission. And it's fitting that we celebrate LGBTQ Month here in the city of Los Angeles. The appointment before you, I would say, would be our first LGBTQ representative serving on the area, Harbor Area Planning Commission's history. So to Mona, congratulations. Colleagues, I've known Ms. Sutton for, geez, 15 years now. We worked together when I was a senior lead officer, and we addressed some of the quality of life concerns on Gaffey, on Gaffey Street. She is a well-respected businesswoman, along with her partner, Leslie Jones, who's here. And at the time, we had a number of quality life concerns. And I turned to the business community along Gaffey Street corridor and created the Gaffey Street Business Watch. And it was Mona who was the first to raise her hand and say, "I want to help the police department. I want to get involved." And our work together on being responsive to the business community's concerns, working with the LAPD, really helped shape and change the culture of how we were doing things on Gaffey Street and beyond the San Pedro community. Fast forward to where we're at today. Mona Sutton is now the LAPD CPAB co-chair, working alongside Captain Orb. She is an incredible advocate for San Pedro communities, has invested her own money into the development efforts in San Pedro. And I'm just so grateful to be here, supporting Mayor Garcetti's confirmation, recommendation to put Mona in this commission. Now, at a time where we are looking at redeveloping our waterfront and looking forward to this Friday's agenda meeting, where we're going to look at the 50-year lease at Port of Call Development, there's going to be, even with the announcement of the new Port of Call, there's going to be opportunities for us to look at ways to bring investment into the downtown San Pedro area with housing, with retail, commercial space. I want to share, have Mona share with this council her thoughts on the redevelopment efforts in the San Pedro area and what she plans on bringing to the table as a Harbor Area Planning Commissioner.
Thank you very much.
Mike?
Thank you very much, Councilman Buscagino. And thank you to Mayor Garcetti for considering me for this appointment. I sit here before you today as a proud San Pedron and also as a community advocate for all of the harbor area. My work for the last 10 years with the Community Police Advisory Board as their partner and chair has lent me a really tremendous amount of perspective of Harbor City, Harbor Gateway, Wilmington, and where I'm from as a business owner and stakeholder from San Pedro, to understand truly what has and what has not happened over the last 25 years of my tenure of being a resident in regard to development and the lack thereof. So I'm excited to be thought of for this appointment because I think that, from a small business perspective and a stakeholder's perspective, I have a lot of voices that come to me and saying, "We want more for our harbor area." So, Councilman, now that we have signed, that the city has signed the deal for the waterfront development, we are truly on a precipice of being able to have thoughtful and meaningful investment, not just from large, big-box potential investors, but from our great small-business community as well. And in that, I will, if you vote for me today and confirm me, I will proudly and strongly serve as an advocate for thoughtful development for all corridors and all of the business area, as well as continue to advocate for, all that we want is for our quality of life to continue to improve, for crime to continue to be fought vehemently, and for us to have a safe, clean, and fantastic destination that is a landmark and will be the crown jewel of all of Southern California, or will be our great port and port town. So thank you for considering me, and I'm proud to be thought of, and I will serve with great strength, and I will give it my very, very best. So thank you for having me here today.
Thank you, Mona, and thank you for taking on this role, this responsibility of doing everything you can to continue to give to the city of Los Angeles and our harbor area communities. I really appreciate Mayor Garcetti's recommendation and looking forward to working with you. I strongly urge an "I-vote," colleagues. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fourth with, please.
Congratulations, and fourth with per Mr. Buscagino.
Madam Clerk, let's move on to item 34. That was called special for cards. Madam Clerk, the first speaker is John Walsh, item 34.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org blogging, JWalshConfidential tweeting at HollywoodDams. And we're now on number 34, the appointment of Benjamin Torres to the Commission for Community and Family Services. Well, he wasn't important enough because he wasn't a white man or a white woman, so he's not up here. If his skin color had been white, he would have been up here. And as I said, the last time I got up and spoke about somebody a couple of years ago, he had to leave his appointment. You appointed him unanimously. That was for kiddie porn. So you look up Child Pornography L.A. City Appointee Commission, and you will find all the details. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Next speaker, Antonia Ramirez, on item 34.
Thank you. We are deeply disappointed in Mayor Eric Garcetti's poor choice and lack of prudence in the selection of Benjamin Torres to the Commission of the Community and Family Services until June 30, 2020. Now we know where our taxpayers' funding has been going to, to subsidize these nosey, violent, racist, hate-mongering, violent, racist, hate-mongering, wetbacks, and chungo Latino gang-banging pussies, thieves, come-caca assholes, and losers. All these gang-bangers are losers, and we are subsidizing these illegal undesirables. Again, they have no legal standing, but here we are, thanks to the Illuminati or the globalists, we are subsidizing housing to these individuals. And Mr. Torres has been complicit in organizing and housing these illegals while we've got military veterans homeless, out on the streets, or impoverished, or legal-law-abiding baby boomers, and senior citizens. Middle-class America, thanks to the Illuminati or the globalists, are ending up on the streets while we're supplying and subsidizing this Third World ghetto crap. How does that work? I don't get it. And I can tell you from experience, I live on the streets, and I see this all the time.
Ms. Ramirez, you need to get back to the item 34.
Again, back on the topic, yes, and we are on the topic. We're just giving you a dissenting opinion here. And again, we are not helping our American citizens, thanks to Mr. Benjamin Torres, who is Latino, probably a wetback, and he's approving and confirming the subsidies of all these wetbacks and gang-bangers. I am appalled, and I am shocked. Why are we choosing Benjamin Torres? Why don't we get someone like McGriffith or Kissinger or Rockefeller and all the other schmucks to get law-abiding citizens? But they're Illuminati too, so they're not going to help. We should appoint El Jefe, Donald Trump, because he will put a legal-law-abiding citizen and house them correctly. Again, let's come back to the rule of law. Let's subsidize our legal-law-abiding.
Ma'am, your time is up. Ms. Ramirez, your time is up. Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes cards on this item.
Madam President, she is disrupting the meeting by continuing to talk after her time.
Ms. Ramirez, thank you.
It should be warned.
That concludes cards on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the votes.
Fourteen eyes.
Let's move on to item 44. That was called special for cards. Mr. Walsh, item 44. Mr. Walsh passes. Mr. Hunt, item 34, I'm sorry, 44. Is Mr. Hunt in the room? He is not. Okay, that concludes cards on this item. Madam Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the votes.
Fourteen eyes.
Let's move on to item 57. Call special for cards. Ms. Ramirez, item 57, ma'am.
She has one. Madam President, should be noted that 57 has an amending motion which has been circulated.
Thank you. Ms. Ramirez, I will remind you, you have one minute left. This is item 57.
Wonderful. Item number 57. And would you believe it, I left it back there because Officer Martinez called me back there. I will just say that I'm all for the children's steering committee, as long as you weed out the wetbacks and the gang-banging chungos, and they have no input into this system in America. Hell, no. Bring the legal-law-abiding children. Legal-law-abiding children that didn't come from wetback parents. Put them in the committee and let them speak lawfully and for the greater good of America. City Attorney, you need to really improve your legal-scholarly work here. You need to improve the quality of life and the city meetings. Learn some more law. We need someone who can implement the rule of law.
She is not talking about this item.
And these children need to learn from the examples. They need to learn what the rule of law is, and that is to provide American citizens with the proper, best service all across America.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. That concludes cards on item 47. There's an amendment that had been circulated. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the votes.
Fourteen eyes.
Let's move on to item 48.
Madam President, just for clarification, that was item 57, and there is a request to have this go forth with.
Without objection, that item will go forth with. Let's move on to item 48. That was called special for cards, 48.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential tweeting at HollywoodDams. This is, you know, we have the largest government bureaucracy in America, the highest-paid city councilman, but we don't have enough consultants. So we're going to have, they've already picked a consultant. He's a white guy. He's Jewish. A consultant to help complete the city's assessment of Fair Housing Plan. Not to start it, to help complete it. Maybe he can sign it, or maybe he can collate it. General Manager, it tells you $150,000 for a consultant. I want everybody to go out and take a look at the state of your sidewalk in this city, in your home, and realize they're spending $150,000 for a consultant that doesn't even live in Los Angeles, is the same ethnic group as the mayor.
Next speaker is Oscar Mohamed on item 48.
We should designate a fair plan for the Fair Housing Association. We should include African-Americans in our government. The government do not represent African-Americans. We should have better leadership. We are in a leadership crisis today in America. We should have more affordable housing, especially for the disabled African-American people from the Christian community. They're walking around destitute, sleeping anywhere they can, and they don't have any place to stay. We should need more affordable homes, more affordable housing. We should have a supernatural government today, super-government today, to go past ordinary duty. Our political system do not do any duty. We need to bridge political responsibility. We are in an environment today of a lax environment, an unserviced environment, and also our island environment, and they're very dangerous and not good for human consumption. We should try to live by the book that governs us. We should come back to the Constitution of the United States of America. The United States Constitution and the United States Constitution are liberian or the same, are Liberian or the same book. The people from Liberia brought the Constitution to the United States of America. We should be more accountable in government. We should end mismanagement of, end mismanagement of, mismanagement of revenues. We should have fair distribution of the wealth, especially to the needy.
Thank you. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Fourth with on this item. Let's go to 49. Mr. Walsh and Mr. Gus, item 49.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org tweeting at HollywoodDams. The LAPD, the teardrop rapist. Remember the teardrop rapist? He's still out there. He's still raping. He's waiting for women to get drunk, and then he rapes them. So more liquor licenses, so we can get more women drunk. Reinstate the reward offer of $50,000. Reinstate the reward offer of $50,000. Anybody who, and there's dozens of people who know who he is, gangsters, but if they were to go here, they would be slit, their throats would be slit. Snitches get stitches. So you can offer all the money in the world. You got a $25,000 reward now for information on the death of a dog. I want you to know there are hundreds of blacks and Hispanics who have no reward on their heads for being captured. Why? And they're treated, in other words, lower than dogs. You got a $20,000 reward on a dog, and I don't believe the whole story that he was beaten to death by his owner and nobody got the name. I'm telling you right now, this is the most discredited city council in the world.
Mr. President, he's not talking about this item.
Get on subject, Mr. Walsh.
I want to know about the award for information. I want to know how long this reward is, since 2012. So it's been three years, and nobody will tell you who the Teardrop Rapist is, because no one wants their throat slit. You might as well be fucking yourselves up the ass. That's all you're doing.
Mr. Gus.
Yes, council members, as some of you may know, I am now a featured writer on Huffington Post, and I will be back on KFI this weekend.
Stay on the subject, Mr. Gus.
I'm telling you what I'm going to be doing about this subject. I will be writing about this subject for Huffington Post. And if anybody doubts it, you can go to Huffington Post and put my name there. So as a contributor to Huffington Post, and as a returning guest on KFI on Sunday, I'm asking that since this is an additional six months, that we have whatever members of the city council who are police officers get involved in this. We know Mr. Buscayino is a former police officer, and we know that Mr. Englander claims to have been a police officer. And I think we need police input as to why this hasn't been solved. I'm hoping Mr. Buscayino will stand up and tell us why this hasn't been solved, and I'm hoping that Mitch Englander, who doesn't seem to be here, can share with us his police wisdom, because he claimed to be a police officer, why this reward hasn't been solved. I mean, honestly, where is Mr. Englander?
Stay on the subject, Mr. Gus.
Where is that police knowledge? Because you've already squandered how many six-month intervals about this? I think we need police input on this. So please, Mr. Weston, city council members, tell us the day after the primary, where is Mr. Englander today?
Thank you, you're off topic. Okay, you're off topic. Okay. Let us prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, now we'll now move to item 46. Mr. Walsh, Mr. Hunt. Mr. Walsh, I'm told you're out of time. Okay, so it's Mr. Hunt, and a card, Mr. City Attorney, I believe to be Mr. Spindler. If you're here, come forward.
Yes, I want to make sure that I don't talk off the topic, so this is about expanding the definition.
Speak up, we can't hear you.
The definition of a firearm to include the frame and receiver weapon when you get a temporary restraining order.
You're off the topic. Come on now, get on the.
They should include in this proposal anybody who gets a restraining order.
Okay, you're off topic. Your time's expired. Mr. Hunt.
Consider this the Red Chief Hunt for the record, as the card states, the Red Chief Hunt. I want to talk about firearms and the updating of firearms. I don't know who's done the investigation for this, or who's done the study, but before we approve anything, city council should do a study, the police department should do a study, a thorough study. In this, asking for whatever we want or whatever they want makes no sense, because I see no study behind what they wanted and what they wanted for. This is why LAPD is always in trouble. Now, this is from the Red Chief Hunt. When you guys do something like this, and consider changing firearms and stuff like that, please have a complete study for not only the city council, but for the public as well. I've just spoken, the Red Chief Hunt.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Farrell.
If I could, item 57, forthwith, please. 57, forthwith, thank you.
Okay, we'll now go to item 32. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Mr. President, for the record, item 32 has an amending motion which has been circulated.
Okay, so then let's vote again. Let's vote as amended on item 32. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Krikorian.
Fourthwith, please, on number 32 and number 33.
Fourthwith on 32 and 3. We'll now go to item 15. Let's open the roll. 15, 1-5. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Okay, we're going to go to item 1.
Mr. President, for the record, item 1C, J, as well as K are continued to July 26.
Okay, Mr. Gus. Mr. Jesus Torres. Mr. Torres. Mr. Quintana. Quintano. Mr. Hunt. Ms. Phyllis Patterson and Kathy Irving, please come forward. Yes, ma'am.
As I said, we were lost, and we didn't really know we were coming to such a prestigious bill.
Speaking to the mic.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Ms. Irving has lived in this house her entire life. We thought that this was completely resolved, and she's just gotten out of like eight weeks in the hospital, and during this time, her mother passed away. And we are asking or begging you to forgive this. We thought we were totally okay with everything, and we had no idea that there was any kind of fee, and she has no income whatsoever, no social security, no income. Her next step would be on the street if she loses her house. And so we're here basically begging you to forgive this, or do whatever you can.
Okay, this is what we can do. We will continue this item for 30 days, which would mean that would bring us to July 8th, so no action.
Mr. President, it would be July 26th, the 8th is a recess.
Oh, okay, so it'd be July 26th, she'll have to return, and then you can speak with the building and safety gentleman who's right in front of you, and see if you can't make some arrangements, but you can tell her to just relax, because now she has until the 26th of July, which would give her time to talk to see if arrangements could be made.
To forgive the payment?
That's what you would talk to this gentleman about.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
All right.
Mr. President, for the record, for this item, we need, the council needs to identify which property it is, and as soon as building and safety does identify, they will let us know.
That's item 1A.
Oh, 1A, please.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, I have another card, I believe to be Mr. Spindler. Mr. Spindler, come forward. And I'm still looking for Mr. Torres and Mr. Ralph Quintana.
Yes, this is item number 1, so these are about multiple liens on properties. Every single one of these liens can be forgiven, but the councilman has to approve it. Only your councilman in your district can get the lien waived. That's why it's a dirty secret, but you have to go to your councilman, and you got to say, "I want my lien waived, I need your help." And then they will direct you to a various nonprofit organization that you can contribute to. So if you give a campaign donation, you can get your lien waived completely. If you give a little bit to public safety, then you can get maybe 50% off your lien, but you have to come up here, you got to fill out a card, and most importantly, you have to wear the magic hat. You got to wear the magic hat.
You're off topic.
So when you come up here and you want your lien removed, all you have to say are three letters, FBI.
Thank you.
And that'll get it done.
Thank you. You're off topic. That's your last warning, okay? Do we have Mr. Torres, Mr. Quintana? I think it's Quintana, Quenjana. Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Buscayino, I think item 24, is it?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, in the late 1800s, the small town of Los Angeles began a transformation into a major metropolis fueled in large part by the discovery and drilling of some of the most productive oil fields in history. By 1930, Los Angeles was producing nearly one-quarter of the world's oil output, and its population grown to 1.2 million. In the decades that followed, L.A. grew, and though many wells closed, many remained in operation surrounded by urban growth. And as housing was constructed closer and closer to active wells, machinery was camouflaged, loud noises were abated, and methane pockets were vented. Unfortunately, as oil production became more hidden and cities oversight became more lax. And that ends today with the creation of a Petroleum and Natural Gas Administration and Safety Office under the Board of Public Works. In my district alone, Wilmington and much of the port are above one of the largest oil fields in the region with numerous active wells in close proximity to housing. San Pedro is home to a massive butane and propane storage facility, also right next to housing. And both Harbor City and Wilmington are home to three oil refineries, one of which is the largest on the West Coast. We definitely have called on and need an expert on staff to help oversee these facilities and ensure public health and safety is protected. I strongly ask for an i-vote. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I want to ask Mr., or recognize Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to rise and ask for an i-vote on this. This motion, or this action today, is a long time in coming. The proposal that I made along with you, Mr. President, and Mr. Coretts, to hire an oil and gas expert to advise our council on technical issues relating to a wide variety of items that come before us having to do with petroleum and natural gas drilling, storage, and conveyance is necessary now as it was when we proposed it. This expert will give us important insight into how we can make decisions and accomplish what really is our most important goal as council members, which is to protect the health and safety of the people we represent. The proposal came about, for the expert, came about because we were told in no uncertain terms that if we proceeded with the ban on fracking that this council endorsed, I believe unanimously about two years ago, we were going to get sued by the dirty energy industry. In order to make the moratorium withstand what is absolutely certain legal challenges, we needed advice from an expert in the field who could help us make our decision on the final ordinance language. So I still believe very strongly we need to place that moratorium, we need to make good on the promise we made to the people in the neighborhoods of Los Angeles a couple of years ago, and we need to stop the dangerous drilling in our neighborhoods, and this position is essential to get that done, so I ask for an i-vote.
Mr. Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. President. As Mr. Bonin mentioned, we introduced a motion on fracking back in 2013. We still can't do anything to move it forward even now because of the lack of the expert. Also, in April 2014, I introduced a motion acknowledging the fact that NASA found that we have a substantially greater gas leakage rate that at the time was considered 61% greater than expected, and that was before the Aliso Canyon massive gas leak. We also asked the CAO to gather information that departments may have regarding methane leaks. No action was ever taken in that regard. I believe part of that, again, is because the lack of expertise. So I think it's time we have that expertise. We have the largest urban oil field in the country, and to not have an expert on staff is somewhat beyond me. I think this is an item whose time has absolutely come.
Mr. Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to rise in strong support of these recommendations. I just would point out that item, recommendation number 4, in that it includes budgetary implications, I would ask that the report back also come to the Budget and Finance Committee for consideration. And item 3 includes a recommendation for the remainder of fiscal year 2015, 2016. That may be moot at this point, but the positions are fully funded in the fiscal year beginning on July 1st. So I'm not sure if this is, because I know this came up a long while back, and at this point, time has dragged on a bit. We don't really have time in the fiscal year, so I ask Mr. Buscayino if this is still, is this still necessary, or, because we do have full funding beginning on July 1st.
We can strike that part, if you'd like.
Okay. That makes it, I think, simpler. If we'd strike that and then include the report back on number 4 to Budget and Finance as well, I would appreciate that.
Glad to accept that.
Okay, fine.
Yep.
Okay, now I have one card that was submitted before we began our conversation. Now, if it's on this item, it's now too late. Martha Arguelo, please come forward. Cards have to be submitted before the conversations begin.
My name is Martha Dina Arguelo. I'm the Executive Director of Physicians for Social Responsibility, and I'm here also representing Standing Together Against Neighborhood Drilling. We want to thank the council for this motion, and we are supportive. We are a little concerned about the funding for this position. We would not, we have seen in other agencies this divided loyalties between who funds you and how well you regulate. We can certainly see that at Dogger and at other agencies. So we'd ask that you look at how you're going to fund this position long-term so that we don't create perverse incentives to continue to take out oil next to where people live, work, and play. We think that the Board of Public Works has a history of showing concern for communities and is a good place for the administrator. And again, you know, this administrator will face many challenges. As you've heard already, we sit on top of one of the largest oil fields in, urban oil fields in the country, and those of us who live, work, play, and learn near these facilities feel we should keep this in the ground, and we want to see this oil administrator be the solar administrator and the wind administrator so that we become the largest producer of wind and solar in the country. So again, thank you for making public health a priority, and we will continue to work with you to make sure that our energy system... systems are actually supporting community health. Thank you.
Okay, and I did find one on Mr. Gus on item 24.
That's right, because if one person gets to speak...
Well, you're getting to speak, Mr. Gus. Go ahead.
Well, point of procedure for the city attorney, prior to this item being called, your sergeant-at-arms told me that I could not speak even though you did have my cards, so I'm trying to understand the criteria for calling...
You want to speak on this item, Mr. Gus?
I do want to speak on the item.
And then we can explain it to you later, but this is your time to actually speak on this item.
And that, viewers, is why this is a rigged agenda item, because they don't let critics speak, they only let supporters speak. So my question is, if you're dealing in gas engineering and geology, as we know, the Porter Ranch area had an extremely dangerous set of circumstances, and now you're addressing this report without the council member from that district. And as a regular critic and contributor to local media...
Stay on the subject.
I am concerned that Mr. Wesson is trying to wedge out critics who have a right to know why the most dangerous petroleum and natural gas situation in the city, you all know it, you all jumped in front of the cameras for it, why are you letting this item proceed without the council member from that district presence? Why are you doing this without Mr. Englander here? He's the council member of Porter Ranch. You have an environmental situation that endangered thousands, if not tens of thousands of lives. Why are you voting on this now without Mr. Englander here? I am on subject. Stop trying to silence critics. Mr. Englander is absent. Please wait until he returns. He came in last place yesterday.
Okay, you're off the subject now. Okay, thank you, and that was a members of error on my part. We'd already satisfied public comment on this item. Let's prepare to vote.
Mr. President, just for the record...
Yes.
There's an amending motion on this, and that motion has since been circulated.
Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, before we go into closed session, I do have a public comment card. Mr. City Attorney, it is from, I believe it to be from Mr. Spindler on item 56. If you wish to speak, please come forward on item 56.
Twenty-four and forty-six, fourth with.
Twenty-four and forty, items 24 and 46, fourth with. Okay. Uh, yes, okay. Independent Living Centers, Southern California versus City of Los Angeles, ADA violations. Absolutely yes. So whatever happens, I want Independent Living Centers to get as much money out of this city as humanly possible because this is significant exposure to federal law violations, and that is what we're focusing on here. Not local federal law violations. When you screw with federal law, it supersedes state law and local law, and you have to comply, and you don't like it. So today, in the city of Los Angeles, we're gonna have this five-year-old case finally settled, and that's good, and hopefully also the FBI has been invited to the closed session. That would be very, very good, and also an ADA coordinator, and a member, of course, of the Commission on Disability for the City of Los Angeles must be present because of Willets, and because it covers Willets. So now you're violating Willets, you're violating the ADA, and you're violating federal law. All in the same item. So enjoy yourselves in the closed session, and make sure you know two things. One, I ain't gonna goddamn die, and number two, you have the right to remain silent. All right, your time has expired. Mr. Sadio, we're getting ready to go into closed session, but I see your name on the queue.
Just for purposes of announcement, I want to introduce Jim Franklin is with us.
I thought that was him, Jim.
You know Jim Franklin?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do, and he looks good.
Great friend of the working men and women of this city, state, and nation.
Forever.
Forever, and you remember him from many of our efforts.
1991 is when I first met Big Jim.
Eighty-eight, ninety-one, and our efforts to keep the hospital open.
Good to see you.
Jim Franklin.
Good to see you, Jim.
CBT, what was it? Black Trade Unionists, Rainbow Coalition.
Okay, can we clear the...
Oh, yeah, some Christian leadership conference.
Can we clear the chambers? Sergeants, can we clear the chambers? We're gonna go into closed session.
[1103.92]
Okay, Madam Clerk, I believe we're back in open session. What's before this, uh, body?
Counsel has general public comment.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, Ms. Ramirez, Mr. Gus, please come forward. Please come forward. Mr. Walsh, you're right there. Ms. Ramirez, Mr. Gus.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential, and the triumphant president of Anybody But Englander. You laugh when I get up here. Do you think I'm jerking off up here? I'm not jerking off. Tens of thousands of people looked at what I said about Anybody But Englander. He came in fifth. Two is the winner. He spent the most money. He sucked the most cock. He sucked the mayor's cock. He sucked everyone's cock so that he would win. Everybody thought that Englander was gonna win. And you want to know why he really lost? Because he's tarred with your brush. This is the worst city council in America, and you know what the public did by putting him in fifth? They sentenced him to three more goddamn years, sitting here, listening to me kick the shit out of him. And he doesn't have the balls to get up here and speak. He's at home contemplating suicide. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Ms. Ramirez, followed by Mr. Gus, followed by Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, remember, thanks to Billy Bob Clinton and Hillary Clinton, they subsidized all nosy, violent, jealous, racist, hate-mongering wetbacks, and chungo latino gang-banging pussies, thieves, pigs, and come-caca assholes. So today, all legal law-abiding baby boomers, senior citizens, and our beloved United States military veterans are homeless. Further, we know Hillary is a lesbo, and she slept with Donald Shalela and other radical feminist attorneys. Never mind that everybody ends up dead around her, including many of the military veterans at Benghazi. And so she doesn't give a crap about military veterans. And this morally, ethically bankrupt, egotistical, ungrateful, un-American should be in prison for all her misdeeds. Well, God bless El Jefe Donald Trump, who has brought balls back to America, along with true masculinity. He will not sell America out, and he will protect all Americans. And we ask ISIS to shove jalapeno up the FBI and CIA.
Okay, thank you. So if I can get Mr. Gus, Ms. Richardson, I don't see Mr. Hunt, and Mr. Mohammed. Yes, Dan?
Council members, I will be back on KFI on Sunday morning to talk about your hijinks. If you think it's funny, tune in. Sunday mornings with Elizabeth Espinoza. As you know, I'm now a featured writer on Huffington Post. I have an article about Mayor Garcetti's awkward, dishonest tweets in HuffingtonPost.com's featured segment regarding Mr. Wesson. Mr. Wesson, if you want concessions from me, there must be concessions from you. I have a CityWatch L.A. article about Mr. Wesson. Nice guy. Maybe we'll have better communications, but it's a give and a get. Meanwhile, if the city continues to withhold documents, believe me, a judge is gonna order all of you to cough them up soon. And Mr. Caretz thinks it's a joke until I publish a recording of Mr. Caretz trying to raise funds. Huffington Post, KFI.
Okay, Ms. Richardson, followed by Mr. Mohammed, followed by Mr. Hunt. Yes, ma'am?
Israel. Some people from Los Angeles go to live in Israel as well as other people from all over the world that live there as Jews. Once immigrants get to Israel, some of them want to push the boundaries back. When they push the boundaries back for Iraqis and Iranians, sometimes they complain. And some people have said Israel was wrong letting these people do that, because then they start talking about it, they start arguing, they start fighting, then they start shooting, then the bombs drop. And the Israelis say, "Big brother, big brother, come save us." And the United States presidents go where they bomb Iraq and Iran because there's a lot of confusion concerning those boundaries. That affects Los Angeles, that affects countries all over the world because they're getting bombed. The Iraqis and Iranians, they want to take vengeance on the people that are doing that. That's why it's so important that they know the boundaries, and the boundaries are set so that they don't go over there and cause problems. Give us more room. We want to be more.
Thank you. So if I can get Mr. Mohammed, Mr....
Thank you.
Mr. Mohammed, Mr. Gus, followed by Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, remember, thanks to Billy Bob Clinton and Hillary Clinton, they subsidized all nosy, violent, jealous, racist, hate-mongering wetbacks, and chungo latino gang-banging pussies, thieves, pigs, and come-caca assholes. So today, all legal law-abiding baby boomers, senior citizens, and our beloved United States military veterans are homeless. Further, we know Hillary is a lesbo, and she slept with Donald Shalela and other radical feminist attorneys. Never mind that everybody ends up dead around her, including many of the military veterans at Benghazi. And so she doesn't give a crap about military veterans. And this morally, ethically bankrupt, egotistical, ungrateful, un-American should be in prison for all her misdeeds. Well, God bless El Jefe Donald Trump, who has brought balls back to America, along with true masculinity. He will not sell America out, and he will protect all Americans. And we ask ISIS to shove jalapeno up the FBI and CIA.
Okay, thank you. So if I can get Mr. Gus, Ms. Richardson, I don't see Mr. Hunt, and Mr. Mohammed. Yes, Dan?
Council members, I will be back on KFI on Sunday morning to talk about your hijinks. If you think it's funny, tune in. Sunday mornings with Elizabeth Espinoza. As you know, I'm now a featured writer on Huffington Post. I have an article about Mayor Garcetti's awkward, dishonest tweets in HuffingtonPost.com's featured segment regarding Mr. Wesson. Mr. Wesson, if you want concessions from me, there must be concessions from you. I have a CityWatch L.A. article about Mr. Wesson. Nice guy. Maybe we'll have better communications, but it's a give and a get. Meanwhile, if the city continues to withhold documents, believe me, a judge is gonna order all of you to cough them up soon. And Mr. Caretz thinks it's a joke until I publish a recording of Mr. Caretz trying to raise funds. Huffington Post, KFI.
Okay, Ms. Clerk, I believe we're back in open session. What's before this, uh, body?
Counsel has general public comment.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, Ms. Ramirez, Mr. Gus, please come forward. Please come forward. Mr. Walsh, you're right there. Ms. Ramirez, Mr. Gus.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential, and the triumphant president of Anybody But Englander. You laugh when I get up here. Do you think I'm jerking off up here? I'm not jerking off. Tens of thousands of people looked at what I said about Anybody But Englander. He came in fifth. Two is the winner. He spent the most money. He sucked the most cock. He sucked the mayor's cock. He sucked everyone's cock so that he would win. Everybody thought that Englander was gonna win. And you want to know why he really lost? Because he's tarred with your brush. This is the worst city council in America, and you know what the public did by putting him in fifth? They sentenced him to three more goddamn years, sitting here, listening to me kick the shit out of him. And he doesn't have the balls to get up here and speak. He's at home contemplating suicide. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Ms. Ramirez, followed by Mr. Gus, followed by Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, remember, thanks to Billy Bob Clinton and Hillary Clinton, they subsidized all nosy, violent, jealous, racist, hate-mongering wetbacks, and chungo latino gang-banging pussies, thieves, pigs, and come-caca assholes. So today, all legal law-abiding baby boomers, senior citizens, and our beloved United States military veterans are homeless. Further, we know Hillary is a lesbo, and she slept with Donald Shalela and other radical feminist attorneys. Never mind that everybody ends up dead around her, including many of the military veterans at Benghazi. And so she doesn't give a crap about military veterans. And this morally, ethically bankrupt, egotistical, ungrateful, un-American should be in prison for all her misdeeds. Well, God bless El Jefe Donald Trump, who has brought balls back to America, along with true masculinity. He will not sell America out, and he will protect all Americans. And we ask ISIS to shove jalapeno up the FBI and CIA.
Okay, thank you. So if I can get Mr. Gus, Ms. Richardson, I don't see Mr. Hunt, and Mr. Mohammed. Yes, Dan?
Council members, I will be back on KFI on Sunday morning to talk about your hijinks. If you think it's funny, tune in. Sunday mornings with Elizabeth Espinoza. As you know, I'm now a featured writer on Huffington Post. I have an article about Mayor Garcetti's awkward, dishonest tweets in HuffingtonPost.com's featured segment regarding Mr. Wesson. Mr. Wesson, if you want concessions from me, there must be concessions from you. I have a CityWatch L.A. article about Mr. Wesson. Nice guy. Maybe we'll have better communications, but it's a give and a get. Meanwhile, if the city continues to withhold documents, believe me, a judge is gonna order all of you to cough them up soon. And Mr. Caretz thinks it's a joke until I publish a recording of Mr. Caretz trying to raise funds. Huffington Post, KFI.
Okay, Ms. Richardson, followed by Mr. Mohammed, followed by Mr. Hunt. Yes, ma'am?
Israel. Some people from Los Angeles go to live in Israel as well as other people from all over the world that live there as Jews. Once immigrants get to Israel, some of them want to push the boundaries back. When they push the boundaries back for Iraqis and Iranians, sometimes they complain. And some people have said Israel was wrong letting these people do that, because then they start talking about it, they start arguing, they start fighting, then they start shooting, then the bombs drop. And the Israelis say, "Big brother, big brother, come save us." And the United States presidents go where they bomb Iraq and Iran because there's a lot of confusion concerning those boundaries. That affects Los Angeles, that affects countries all over the world because they're getting bombed. The Iraqis and Iranians, they want to take vengeance on the people that are doing that. That's why it's so important that they know the boundaries, and the boundaries are set so that they don't go over there and cause problems. Give us more room. We want to be more.
Thank you. So if I can get Mr. Mohammed, Mr....
Thank you.
Mr. Gomez, followed by Ms. Richardson.
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 Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, I believe we're back in open session. What's before this, uh, body?
Counsel has general public comment.
Okay, Mr. Walsh, Ms. Ramirez, Mr. Gus, please come forward. Please come forward. Mr. Walsh, you're right there. Ms. Ramirez, Mr. Gus.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential, and the triumphant president of Anybody But Englander. You laugh when I get up here. Do you think I'm jerking off up here? I'm not jerking off. Tens of thousands of people looked at what I said about Anybody But Englander. He came in fifth. Two is the winner. He spent the most money. He sucked the most cock. He sucked the mayor's cock. He sucked everyone's cock so that he would win. Everybody thought that Englander was gonna win. And you want to know why he really lost? Because he's tarred with your brush. This is the worst city council in America, and you know what the public did by putting him in fifth? They sentenced him to three more goddamn years, sitting here, listening to me kick the shit out of him. And he doesn't have the balls to get up here and speak. He's at home contemplating suicide. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Ms. Ramirez, followed by Mr. Gus, followed by Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, remember, thanks to Billy Bob Clinton and Hillary Clinton, they subsidized all nosy, violent, jealous, racist, hate-mongering wetbacks, and chungo latino gang-banging pussies, thieves, pigs, and come-caca assholes. So today, all legal law-abiding baby boomers, senior citizens, and our beloved United States military veterans are homeless. Further, we know Hillary is a lesbo, and she slept with Donald Shalela and other radical feminist attorneys. Never mind that everybody ends up dead around her, including many of the military veterans at Benghazi. And so she doesn't give a crap about military veterans. And this morally, ethically bankrupt, egotistical, ingrateful, un-American should be in prison for all her misdeeds. Well, God bless El Jefe Donald Trump, who has brought balls back to America, along with true masculinity. He will not sell America out, and he will protect all Americans. And we ask ISIS to shove jalapeno up the FBI and CIA.
Okay, thank you. So if I can get Mr. Gus, Ms. Richardson, I don't see Mr. Hunt, and Mr. Mohammed. Yes, Dan?
Um, Council members, I will be back on KFI on Sunday morning to talk about your hijinks. If you think it's funny, tune in. Sunday mornings with Elizabeth Espinoza. As you know, I'm now a featured writer on Huffington Post. I have an article about Mayor Garcetti's awkward, dishonest tweets in HuffingtonPost.com's featured segment regarding Mr. Wesson. Mr. Wesson, if you want concessions from me, there must be concessions from you. I have a CityWatch L.A. article about Mr. Wesson. Nice guy. Maybe we'll have better communications, but it's a give and a get. Meanwhile, if the city continues to withhold documents, believe me, a judge is gonna order all of you to cough them up soon. And Mr. Caretz thinks it's a joke until I publish a recording of Mr. Caretz trying to raise funds. Huffington Post, KFI.
Okay, Ms. Richardson, followed by Mr. Mohammed, followed by Mr. Hunt. Yes, ma'am?
Israel. Some people from Los Angeles go to live in Israel as well as other people from all over the world that live there as Jews. Once immigrants get to Israel, some of them want to push the boundaries back. When they push the boundaries back for Iraqis and Iranians, sometimes they complain. And some people have said Israel was wrong letting these people do that, because then they start talking about it, they start arguing, they start fighting, then they start shooting, then the bombs drop. And the Israelis say, "Big brother, big brother, come save us." And the United States presidents go where they bomb Iraq and Iran because there's a lot of confusion concerning those boundaries. That affects Los Angeles, that affects countries all over the world because they're getting bombed. The Iraqis and Iranians, they want to take vengeance on the people that are doing that. That's why it's so important that they know the boundaries, and the boundaries are set so that they don't go over there and cause problems. Give us more room. We want to be more.
Thank you. So if I can get Mr. Mohammed, Mr.... Thank you. So if I can get Mr. Mohammed, Mr. Hunt, followed by, I believe it says my name, which is Mr. Spindler. Yes, sir.
Over there in Israel and the Palestinians, they have what you call a war zone. But we see Israel is still interrogating the Palestinians. They don't have no consequence of their action. But I looked at TV the other day, I see Palestine had turned to westernized, that say, "You forget God, God forgets you." But anyway, we should have more defense for poor Palestine against Israel's transgression regularly and regularly. But Israel and America will never fight. We should end Skid Row. That inhumane condition of those human beings on Skid Row should must come to an end. Skid Row and death row. You have the suicide zone on Skid Row. If you stand too close to the curb, you might get ran over by the police department. We should have more accountability on Skid Row to structure Skid Row in different directions. We see human beings falling lower than animals on Skid Row. Island environment and non-serious environment and illegal environment is very dangerous. We should try to enforce the laws that govern us.
Okay, so if we could, next speaker, please.
The Red Sheep Hunt, for the record. I'm having so much fun playing Wayne Spindler. Here's what I got to say. I attend a police commission, and they treat them niggers just like goddamn niggers. They always arrest them goddamn niggers for speaking. And this is a goddamn shame. Every time you look up, it's a goddamn nigger getting arrested. I say, "God damn." Have you seen some shit like this? Have you ever seen a black Nazi? Goddamn niggers are Nazis. They've got to be goddamn crazy. Dave Chappelle ain't even did this shit. I'm the first one. Now, I'm gonna require about $500,000 for this one. You gave me $215 for the other one. So this one's gonna cost you about $500,000. I say them, they ain't gotta stop arresting them goddamn niggers for free speech. I say it once and for all, Red Sheep Hunt.
Okay, next. And Mr. Previn, your cleanup hitter.
The election results. Catherine Berger, first place. Daryl Park, second place. Bob Huff, third place. Ehrard James Nigerian, fourth place. Mitchell Englander, fifth place. Will the real Mitch Englander please stand up? Please stand up. The biggest loser ever in LA city politics. The biggest loser on the planet right now is that little midget out there hiding somewhere in his fake police uniform. His fake police uniform. Claimed he was a police officer, perjuring himself, representing the city that he's a police officer. That is a goddamn crime on behalf of the municipal corporation of the city of Los Angeles. You know, the employer, he employs you. Bye-bye, Mitch.
All right, your time is up. Okay, Mr. Previn.
Good afternoon, Council President Wesson. It is Eric Previn. I wanted to raise up a question about special meetings of an agency. Is that a piano, sir? Was there a piano in frame today? Fascinating. Special meetings are different than regular meetings, as you know, sir, because a regular meeting has a 72-hour notice period, whereas a special meeting, which you guys will call from time to time, it's 24 hours. So what that does is it inhibits the public's access a little bit, because 48 hours of notice is eroded. But on the B side, the legislature found and saw that it was a good idea, if we're gonna call a shortened notice meeting, to take comment, to take any comment if somebody comes in. So whereas on the regular committee meeting, I think it's been disputed, but nonetheless, you widely satisfy yourself in committee. But in a meeting that is special and has been notice short, on short notice, you have to...
Thank you, Mr. Previn. Your time has expired. Madam Clerk, that leaves us where or brings us where?
Counselor has motions for posting a referral.
They have posted and referred. Any announcements, members? Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we are hosting a blood drive today and tomorrow from 9:00 to 2:45 PM. That is Wednesday and Thursday at the Fourth Floor Media Room, held at City Hall. And all presenting donors will receive a voucher for discounted tickets to an LA Galaxy game, and a voucher for Madame Tussaud's Wax Museum in Hollywood. We still need blood, and there are those who are gonna benefit from your donation, so please participate if you can. Thank you.
Thank you. And on for Mr. Bonin. I want to say that Transportation Committee will meet beginning at 1:30. Transportation Committee will meet beginning at 1:30. If we could all rise, all rise for adjourning motions, all rise. Be quiet, please, silence. Let's rise. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I adjourn in memory of a true dynamo, Ms. Verna B. Daultrey, USC trustee and longtime educator, who passed away on June 1st at the age of 93. She was an inspiration to many and a lifelong commitment, not only to USC, but to the greater Los Angeles community. Daultrey's six-decade career with the Los Angeles Unified School District began in 1943, when she was hired as its youngest teacher. She was only one of four African-Americans employed to teach in the district at that time. She moved from teaching into administrative positions, and ultimately was appointed principal Franklin Elementary School in Los Feliz, a job she held for 23 years. While teaching, Daultrey took night and weekend classes at the University/USC Rossiter School of Education to earn her master's and doctoral degrees. In a Los Angeles Sentinel interview in 2012, she credited USC with giving her a superior education, life-changing experiences, that guided her and her husband throughout their lives together. They were married for 53 years, before Peter passed away in 2002. In 2008, she was named an honorary trustee of USC, and committed $30 million to the university in memory of her husband, who was the founding president and CEO of Founder's Savings and Loan Association. The gift created and named the first interdisciplinary social science building at USC, Daultrey Hall, which officially opened in September 2014. She will be greatly missed, but she left behind a solid legacy.
Thank you. Any more on this? Ms. Martinez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in the memory of Helen Chavez, who passed away on Monday, June 6th, at the age of 88. She embodies the old saying, "Behind every successful man is a powerful woman." Helen, the widow of labor leader Cesar Chavez, and great activist in her own right, was born in Brawley, California, and grew up in the San Joaquin Valley. Her and Cesar Chavez were married for 45 years. She aided him in the fight to organize thousands of people in the labor movement while raising their eight children. She continued her use of nonviolent alternatives for change, and was present in so many strikes, boycotts, and pickets. Helen also worked in the fields picking grapes, when she was soon voted into her full-time position as administrator for the National Farm Workers Association. She maintained the financial record keeper for the association for more than 20 years. Helen changed the role of women in the movements, and at the same time created the opportunity for other Latina women to join the union efforts. She was a backbone to the success of many movements by assisting in administrative tasks and remaining out of the public eye. But she was also a fearless leader when she encouraged others to join her in civil disobedience aimed for the greater good. In 1994, she accepted the U.S. Presidential Medal of Freedom in her husband's honor. She was also recognized for her hardship and effort in 2008, when she was awarded the Latina of the Year by the National Latino Peace Officers Association of the Los Angeles Chapter. Thank you, Helen, for your passionate service and for always fighting for what you believed in. May she rest in peace. She survived by her seven children, Eloise Carrillo, Paul Chavez, Silvio Delgado, Anthony Chavez, Fernando Chavez, Anna Ibarra, Elizabeth Vallarino, 31 grandchildren, and 16 great-grandchildren. May she rest in peace.
Wow. Continue to look on my right side. Now I'm looking to my left side. Don't see any members. This meeting is adjourned.